Hallelujah, let God's visitation happen. Amen, hallelujah. That need to be our heart desire, amen, hallelujah. We did not come to visit some man or somebody here, amen. We came to have the visitation of our God Almighty. That will be a greater touch of God, amen. Even though we are a spiritual family, but we want God to touch us today, hallelujah. Let that be our prayer, let that be our heart desire. Let there be hunger and thirst today in the name of Jesus Christ, hallelujah. Can we all look unto God this morning, amen? Can you all open your mouth and pray with me, please? Welcome the presence of God, ask God to come down and touch you, hallelujah. If anything that is hindering you to reach out to God, just confess before Him. Let Him cleanse you, hallelujah, let Him wash you, let Him make you fresh before Him. Hallelujah, mighty God, we worship You daddy. Come on, open your mouth and talk to the King of kings and the Lord of laws. Hallelujah, let Him reign over you, let Him release His glory, His anointing upon you, hallelujah. Amen, God my Father, we worship You daddy, we honor You God my Lord. We declare that, God my Lord, You are the greatest of greatest. You are the mighty of mighty, You are the great I am that I am, my God, my Lord, my God. We pray that, God, Your greater visitation will happen today. Your greater touch will happen today. The power of God Almighty that will come down in a greater and a higher level, my God, my Father. Never like before, we want a new manner today, my God, my Lord. A new glory today, my God, my Father. Hallelujah, bless up Your holy name. Thank You Jesus, prepare each one of us, my God my Lord. Let the altar be prepared by Your glory, my God, my Father. If anything that is hindering our God, our people, I ask You to cleanse them by Your holy plight, my God my Lord. In the name, that is the name of all names, the power of all power, my God my Father. Bless up Your holy name. I surrender every single area of the service today. I ask You to bless it, my God, anoint it, my God, with Your power and authority in the name of Jesus. Use your servants so gloriously. Father, we love You, God, we worship You. We come against every plan and welcome the devil. Every power and principality may stand against today's service. We repugn, bind and demolish, oh my God, in the heavenly realm. Every agency of the devil will be destroyed, my God my Lord. Bless up Your holy name, rise up the mighty testimonies, my God. Mighty hands of God will come down and He will do a mighty miracles, my God my Father. We surrender everything in Your blessed hand. Thank You for the new souls you are adding today in our midst, my God my Father. We give all the glory and honor to you and you alone, my God. Jesus name we ask this prayer, amen, hallelujah. Come on, give a clap for the Lord.
Amen. In Matthew chapter seventeen verse twenty says, "And Jesus said unto them, because of your unbelief, for verily I say unto you, if ye have faith of a grain of a mustard seed, ye shall say unto the mountain, remove hence unto yonder place, and it shall be moved, and nothing shall stand impossible unto you." Amen. Today we believe that our Savior, that He can move mountains. He is able to move every single mountain, every single obstacle that's in our way from reaching Him today. So let's sing this song today and sing, Savior, you can move the mountains. That through your power, we are able to move mountains. He has given us the power to move mountains today and let's just sing that and proclaim that today, amen. Savior, you can move the mountains. My God is mighty to save. He is mighty to save. Forever, author of salvation. He rose and conquered the grave. Jesus conquered the grave. And Savior, He can move the mountains. And my God is mighty to save. He is mighty to save. Forever, author of salvation. He rose and conquered the grave. Jesus conquered the grave. And Savior, He can move the mountains. My God is mighty to save. He is mighty to save. Forever, author of salvation. He rose and conquered the grave. Jesus conquered the grave. Shine a light and let the whole world see. We're singing for the glory of the risen King. Jesus, shine Your light and let the whole world see. We're singing for the glory of the risen King. Jesus, shine Your light and let the whole world see. We're singing for the glory of the risen King. Jesus, shine Your light and let the whole world see. We're singing for the glory of the risen King. Savior, He can move the mountains. My God is mighty to save. He is mighty to save. Forever, author of salvation. He rose and conquered the grave. Jesus conquered the grave. We're just gonna sing this song again, cause this song is so powerful. If you know the meaning of this song, you will sing out to our God, you will sing out to our God. Today, let's not just sing this song as a familiar song we always sing in this church. But let's sing this song as a declaration to God, that He is mighty to save. He has saved us from every single situation. He has picked us up from the mirey clay. Oh Jesus, You are so mighty to save. Oh, so mighty to save. We're just gonna sing this song a little bit faster, a little bit faster. Let's just bring a little step into our feet. Let's just sing this song a bit faster and praise Master Jesus, amen. Jesus, Savior, He can move the mountains. My God is mighty to save. He is mighty to save. Forever, author of salvation. He rose and conquered the grave. Jesus conquered the grave. And Savior, He can move the mountains. My God is mighty to save. He is mighty to save. Forever, author of salvation. He rose and conquered the grave. Jesus conquered the grave. Shine a light and let the whole world see. We're singing for the glory of the risen King. Jesus, shine Your light and let the whole world see. We're singing for the glory of the risen King. Jesus, shine Your light and let the whole world see. We're singing for the glory of the risen King. Jesus, shine a light and let the whole world see. We're singing for the glory of the risen King. Savior, He can move the mountains. My God is mighty to save. He is mighty to save. Forever, author of salvation. He rose and conquered the grave. Jesus conquered the grave. And Savior, He can move the mountains. My God is mighty to save. He is mighty to save. Forever, author of salvation. He rose and conquered the grave. Jesus conquered the grave. And Savior, He can move the mountains. My God is mighty to save. And He is mighty to save. Forever, author of salvation. He rose and conquered the grave. Jesus conquered the grave. Oh Jesus, you've conquered the grave, Jesus. Oh, you've conquered the grave, Jesus. Oh, we thank You Jesus. You know, today I was gonna sing the song, Hosanna, Praises Rising. But as I was standing here, God was putting in my heart, that we should sing the song, I Am Trading My Sorrows. That there's some sorrows that need to be traded this morning. There's some things that need to be traded in for the joy of the Lord. So we're gonna sing this song today and we're gonna dance, we're gonna sing, we're gonna shout. Cause there's something that needs to be traded in for joy today. There's something that needs to be traded in today. Let's sing this song, amen. We're gonna sing this in the key of D, amen, yes Jesus, we thank You Jesus. Amen. Amen, Jesus. Just begin to clap your hands for Jesus, just begin to clap. Amen, Jesus. He's able to do all things, He's able to do all things. Don't listen to the music, but focus on God this morning. We are able to trade every single sorrow for the joy of the Lord, amen. He has given us joy this morning, joy and abundance, amen. And I'm trading my sorrow. And I'm trading my shame. And I'm laying them down for the joy of the Lord. And I'm trading my sickness, I'm trading my pain. And I'm laying them down for the joy of the Lord. We say, yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord. And yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord. And yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord, amen. We say, yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord. And yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord. And yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord, amen. And I'm trading my sorrow. And I'm trading my shame. And I'm laying them down for the joy of the Lord. And I'm trading my sickness, I'm trading my pain. And I'm laying them down for the joy of the Lord. We say, yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord. And yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord. We say, yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord, amen. We say, yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord. And yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord. And yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord, amen. I'm pressed but not crushed, persecuted by the abandon. Shut down but not destroyed. Blessed beyond the curse, for His promise will endure. That His joy is gonna be my strength. Though this sorrow may last for the night, His joy comes with the morning. And I'm trading my sorrow, I'm trading my shame. I'm laying them down for the joy of the Lord. And I'm trading my sickness, I'm trading my shame. And I'm laying them down for the joy of the Lord. We say, yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord. And yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord. And yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord, amen. We say, yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord. And yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord. And yes Lord, yes Lord, yes, yes Lord, amen. Amen. We say, yes. We say, yes. We know, God. We say, yes to all You've saved across the world. We say, yes to Your praise. In our midst, oh God, we say, yes. We say, yes to the anointing, oh, we say, yes. We say, yes, we and Your praise. We say, yes, oh God. Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes, Lord. We bless Your name, Jesus. We worship You, Lord. We give You praise, Jesus. We give You praise, just begin to praise in the name of the Lord. Just begin to rise up your own song to the name of the Lord. Just begin to say, yes, to God's will. Yes, to God's way, Jesus. We say, yes, to everything, Jesus. We say, yes. Oh, re ba ba ba, shan ta ra ba ba. Oh, san ta ra ba ba ba, shon toro bo. Oh, san ta ra ba ba ba, shan ta ra ba. Oh, re ba 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 ba, shi tero bo bo, shon ta ra ba. Oh, shan ta ra ba ba, we say, yes, Jesus. We say, yes, to Your will. We say, yes, to Your way. We say, yes, to Your calling, Jesus. Oh, yes, Jesus, yes, Jesus, yes, Jesus. Oh, Jesus, we say, yes, we say, yes. Just begin to rise up your song. We are not dead today, just say, yes, to that. Yes, we are not dead, yet we are alive, yet we are strong, yes, we are healthy. Oh, Jesus, we say, yes, to everything, Jesus. Yes, to Your will, Jesus. Oh, san ta ra ba ba ba, shan ta ra ba. Oh, praises rising in the atmosphere. Oh, praises rising, praises rising. Oh, shan ta ra ba ba ba. Oh, san ta ra ba ba ba, shon toro bo. Oh, san ta ra ba, you are faithful, Jesus. Faithful all our days, Jesus. Oh, san ta ra ba ba ba. Jesus, oh, we praise You, Jesus. Oh, Jesus. Praises rising. Eyes are turning to You. Return to You. Return to You. Hope is stirring. And hope is stirring. And hearts are yearning for You. Oh, we long for You, Jesus. We long for You. Cause when we see You, we find strength to face the day. In Your presence, in Your presence, all our fears are washed away. Washed away. You are the God who saves us. You're worthy of all our praises. Come have Your way among us. We welcome You here, oh Jesus. In Your sound, our broken hearts turn to You. We turn to You. In Your kingdom. And in Your kingdom. Broken lives are made new. You make us new. Oh, Jesus. Cause when we see You, we find strength to face the day. And in Your presence, in Your presence, all our fears are washed away. Oh, washed away. You are the God who saves us. You're worthy of all our praises. Come have Your way among us. We welcome You here, Lord Jesus. Cause when we see You, we find strength to face the day. Oh, in Your presence, in Your presence, all our fears are washed away. Cause when we see You. Cause when we see You, we find strength to face the day. And in Your presence, in Your presence, all our fears are washed away. Cause when we see You. Cause when we see You, we find strength to face the day. In Your presence, in Your presence, all our fears are washed away. Washed away. You are the God who saves us. You're worthy of all our praises. Come have Your way among us. We welcome You here, oh Jesus. Just welcome the Lord, just welcome the Lord into our hearts. Welcome the Lord into your hearts this morning. He wants to, He's knocking at the door of your hearts, so come in. Just welcome Him today. Oh, Jesus, we welcome You, we welcome You, we welcome You, Jesus. Oh, the more we seek You, the more we find You. The more we find You, the more we love You, Jesus. We welcome You, we welcome, we welcome You. Take Your place, take Your place. Have Your way, have Your way, Jesus. Oh, we need You more, we need You more. How great You are, Jesus. Oh, Jesus, oh, Jesus. How many of you want to seek God today? Seek God from the depths of your heart. Seek God truly. When you seek Him, you will find Him. And the more you find Him, the more you will love Him. You will fall in love with God. That you will just wanna sit at His feet, that you just want to drink from the cup that's overflowing in His hands. The cup that's overflowing in blessings, Jesus. The more I seek You. The more I find You. The more I find You, oh Lord. The more I love You. The more I seek You. The more I seek You. The more I find You. And the more I find You. The more I love You. I wanna sit at Your feet, drink from the cup in Your hand. Lay back against You and breathe. Feel Your heartbeat. This love is so deep. It's more than I can stand. I melt in Your peace, it's overwhelming. I want to sit at Your feet, drink from the cup in Your hand. Lay back against You and breathe. Feel Your heartbeat. And this love is so deep. It's more than I can stand. I melt in Your peace, it's overwhelming. I wanna sit at Your feet, drink from the cup in Your hand. Lay back against You and breathe. Feel Your heartbeat. And this love is so deep. It's more than I can stand. I melt in Your peace, it's overwhelming. Oh, Lord, it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming. It's overwhelming. How great is I, God. Sing with me, how great is I, God. And oh, see, how great. And how great is I, God. How great is I, God. And how great is I, God. Oh, sing with me, how great is I, God. And oh, see, how great. How great is I, God. You're the name above all names. And You are worthy of all praise. And my heart will sing, how great is I, God. You're the name above all names. And You are worthy of all praise. And my heart will sing, how great is I, God. And here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that You're my God. Here I am to say that you're my God. You are altogether lovely, altogether worthy, altogether wonderful to me. Here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You are altogether worthy, altogether wonderful to me. And I'll never know how much it costs to see my sin upon that cross. And I'll never know how much it costs to see my sin upon that cross. So here I am, my God. So here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. We declare your glory this morning. You are altogether lovely. And altogether worthy. All together wonderful to me. Here I am, my God. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. Yes, 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 my God, my Lord. Thank you, your wise and sincere King of kings. All together wonderful to me. That's why I said, God, my Lord, here I am. And here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You're altogether lovely. And altogether worthy. All together wonderful to me. Can we say one more time, my God, my Lord? Yes, Father, we love you. Father, we adore you. Father, we pour out to you, God, my Lord. King of kings, we love you, God. My God. You are altogether lovely. Come on with the music now, hallelujah. In the name of Jesus. Oh, my God, my Father. All together wonderful to me. Yes, my God, here I am. Thank you, your wise and sincere King of kings. Oh, the best you can, hallelujah. Declare this morning, hallelujah. We thank for that, the Lord God, my Lord. For all that you have done upon the cross for us. You are altogether lovely. All together worthy. We worship you. All together wonderful to me. So here I am, my God. Here I am to worship. Here I am to bow down. Here I am to say that you're my God. You are altogether lovely. And altogether worthy. All together wonderful to me. Do you believe that he is altogether wonderful to you, hallelujah? Do you believe that in every way? From the morning until the evening? From the night until the morning? That he is altogether, amen, wonderful to you? Amen, if you can think that. Give a best clap for the Lord. And best praises to the Lord. Open your mouth and declare that he is worthy. He is altogether. He is wonderful to us, hallelujah. Even he walked in the midst of the fire. That God almighty is with you. Even he walked in the hell and in the water. He has promised that he will be with you. Every storm and the wind that is hitting in your life, God will help you pull that down, hallelujah. Come on, declare the glory of God. Worship the King of kings and the Lord of lords. That he is worthy. He is worthy, hallelujah. Yes, yes, my God, my Father. We therefore do pray. And we worship you, daddy. We honor you, God, my Father. We declare that you are worthy of all the praise. You're the greatest of greats. You're the mighty of mighty, oh, God. You're the excellency of excellency. Oh, in your name, every knee shall bow. All tongue will confess that Jesus Christ is the Lord and Savior. We declare your glory, my God, my Father. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Makalabalandi, ra bakalabalandi. Bless up your holy name, my God, my King. Thank you, Jesus. We worship you, God, my Father. Let us surrender this morning into the hands of God. That let's remember this nation we live, hallelujah. As we pray every Sunday. The God's touching will be upon Ireland, hallelujah. Not only we will experience the kingdom of God, the people out there, hallelujah, they will experience the same salvation. The same joy we are having it, hallelujah. The same hope we are having it, hallelujah. It is very important for us to pray, hallelujah, for the nation we live. Amen. Let us pray this morning, hallelujah. Amen. Somebody lead in prayer, please, overheard by the Holy Spirit. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah, we worship you, God almighty. Amen, daddy, my God. Hallelujah. Amen, daddy. Jesus. Yes, God. Jesus. Amen, God, my Father. Oh, daddy. Yes, my God, my King. Hallelujah, bless up your holy name. Amen, God, my Father. Yes, my God almighty. Hallelujah. Yes, mighty God. Hallelujah, mighty God, my Father. Amen. Jesus, my God. Yes, we stand in the power and the blood of Jesus, my God. Yes, power, my God. In the name of Jesus, my God. Oh, Father. Bring that glory, oh, God, my Father. Jesus, my Lord God. Oh, daddy, my God. Hallelujah. Yes, amen. Oh, as we are praying here, daddy, you are able to do it. You are the savior of this world. Amen, oh, God. Thank you, Jesus. Amen. Mighty God, my Father. Oh, hallelujah. Yes. Thank you, Jesus.
We pray that the people will want to help biblical.
Yes, my God, my Father. Yes, in the name of Jesus. The name of Jesus. Hallelujah, my God. Thank you, Jesus. Makalabalandi. Ushadala baba kala mama landi ra. Mama kala balandi. Ira bakalabalandi. Yes, my God, my Lord. Hallelujah, my Jesus. Thank you, amen. Her mercy, oh, God, my Father. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah, my God, my King. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah, my God. Amen. Glory. Hallelujah, my God. Jesus. Amen, oh, God. Yes, my God. Oh, daddy. Amen. Yes, my God almighty. Jesus, my Lord. Thank you, Jesus. Yes, in the name of Jesus. Hallelujah, my God. Hallelujah, mighty God, my Father. Glory, God. Jesus. Hallelujah, my God. Amen. Praise you, God. Jesus. Hallelujah, my God almighty. Amen, oh, God almighty, God. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah, my God, my Father. Bless up your holy name. Thank you, Jesus. Amen, daddy, my God. Jesus, my God. Praise you. Amen, oh, God, my Lord.
Amen.
Amen, amen, hallelujah. Give a clap for the Lord, amen. Praise God. You may be seated now. God is good all the time. Amen. Good to see you all, hallelujah. Amen. You can touch your neighbor and tell. Give a nice smile and tell, good to see you in the house of God. Hallelujah. The best smile you can do that, amen. Praise God. Hallelujah. If you cannot smile in the house of God, where else you can smile? You know? Amen. Praise God. Bless up his holy name. So this is a time of testimony. Let's do it quick. Because we got two. Our guest preacher is there. At the same time, we got a team from Frolife. Frolife, they're here. Shall we put our hands to welcome Dom Haman? Hallelujah. They took their time and they came today. As we have been praying since some Sundays in here. And it's good to receive some update, you know, what they are doing and how the country is moving forward, amen. So that will help us to pray more vigilantly, you know, in that particular area. So this is a time of testimony. If anybody have anything, just share short and sweet. Amen. I would like to give about five minutes for the testimony.
I was recently praying for the, you know, I was, Lord put a burden on my heart to pray for the nations, you know. It's a kind of intercessory prayer. I used to pray in the last six months. And God was so good to me. He answered me in every prayers that I prayed. Yes. Whenever he prays me, he gives me an answer for my prayers. He comes to me with a mighty power. And he tells me that, look, I'm answering your prayers. It could be a phone call. And he comes to me with a mighty power. And he said, here is your answer for your prayers, like that. And so I used to cry and pray. And even during my break time in my work, I go and pray with tears. It's all about the revival in the end times, you know. It's for the Christians. We have to, Lord, make them strong to fight for you in the end times, you know. To use in your hands, like that, that kind of prayer. So when I pray like that, I used to pray for my protection. Every time when I leave my house, I used to kneel down and pray like two minutes. Lord, protect me from the evil, because the evil is after you. Every time to attack you. So I used to pray. And God was so good to me every time. And that day, one of that day, I forgot to pray. I was rushing to my work. And I usually get the luas from one stop, but I had to go to another stop that day. So I really was thinking, I was, I used to think a lot in my head, you know. I used to be thinking a lot. There's so much going on in my head. But when I come to the, in traffic lights, I used to be careful. But so that day, I was thinking in my mind that, Lord, I'm careful when I'm coming to the traffic lights. I'm very careful. No, I'm having the presence of mind. Thank you, Lord, for this. I was telling to my mind and I was trying to cross. And I crossed the traffic lights and I have to go, I had to cross the trams as well. But I looked before I crossed the traffic lights. And then I was crossing the luas track. But as soon as I crossed the luas track, and I just stood beside, I felt there's some strong wind passing by. Strong wind, that's all I felt. I looked beside me, the luas is passing by. Like within a second, you know, I was like saved. God saved me from that accident, you know. I thought I was careful, but still I missed. You know, it was a very, it's full of lights there, you know. You can't see that luas is coming. It's coming from a bend, actually, so you can't really see. So that was a great miracle. Before I, after I left the house, I was praying into my mind. Lord, you go before me. You level my, you know, the Lord will go before you and he leveled the mountains, you know. Like that prayer, I prayed him, you know. The Isaiah 45 too. I said the word and I prayed and he really saved me. You know, he was so good. You know, when you pray, he listens. He listens wherever you say. Wherever you go, he's after you. He's watching over you. And then another thing. Thank you, Lord. And another thing, last week, Saturday, I have a landlord, he's Irish. He's a good person. We have three girls living in that house. So I used to tell him word of God, you know, to read Bible, because you're a good person, like that. And there are two other Pentecostal girls as well. So then he had a stroke that night, Saturday night. He had very full weakness of his arm, right arm. So that night, you know, I couldn't pray. I was going to work. Then I told him at 11 o'clock. I told him, I'll pray for you, for your quick recovery, so that you will know that Jesus is a divine healer. I told him like that. And I prayed, I didn't even get a break that night. And I was praying, sitting in a corner of the ward. And I bind the spirit and I put Jesus' blood on his arm and I was praying. And in 11 hours' time, he texted me saying that, you know, he couldn't pick up the coins at 12 o'clock in the midnight. But about 1 o'clock, he texted me saying that I can 60 percentage recovery.
Amen, hallelujah. Thank God for that. Amen, the power of prayer.
And then this Friday, he's telling me he can use the dough, you know, the Play-Doh, he can make something out of it with his hand, you know. He's, you know, he was telling, thank you, Hilda, for all your prayers, like that. He's answering the prayers, you know. If not you and me, nobody is there for, Lord. For devil, there are millions out there, you know. You know, we have to be strong in the Lord.
Amen, amen. Come on, give a clap for the Lord, hallelujah. Thank God for the burden of prayer upon our sister. Amen, there's things we need to learn. And thank God for the protection from the accident of the luas. God is watching over us, amen. Anyone else?
The Lord.
Hallelujah.
I just want to thank God because last Sunday, I went to the pastor for prayer. And he said to me that there's an application that I was late to apply for, but God is gonna like make a way for me to be chosen out of everybody. And a few days before that, the school called home. And because being the next year, you have to apply, but I forgot to apply for it. So when I went to talk to the teacher, he told me that I was too late to apply. So my place can be given to somebody else or else I have to go somewhere else. But then like two days after that, I got a text from the school saying that I've been accepted into the.
Hallelujah, amen. Amen. God is good, amen. As God has revealed through the servant of God, you know. So excitedly it has happened, amen. Thank God for that. Any other testimonies?
Sleep when he came and he. He's not usually interested about anything concerning the church. Many members always come to me, oh, why is it like this? He always feel like he doesn't want to be here. So I don't know, yesterday, something happened. And I see it as a big breakthrough.
Hallelujah.
The good thing that they say are going to happen to me. I started already with my children and everything. So as I was resting yesterday, because I knew about the chain prayer, I needed to rest before my time. And he came and he on the light in my room. I say, why are you waking me up? He just stay around. And he said, mommy, oh, this song was so beautiful today in the church. I look at my son, like to say, what you want to talk about? Waking me up for that? And he said, what is that first song again? I look at him, I was like, under the duvet. That first song, mommy, you have to remember. I started just going through my head. I just gave one more of you. He said, no, not that one. I say, okay. I got it in my mind. He said, yes, 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 it's the one. He started singing it, singing it. He said, mommy, I will not be born anymore. I want to be going. I'll be there all the time in the church. Oh, Sister Michelle, I thank God for her life. I thank God for all the things that is happening. Because now, you know, I didn't usually, I don't like going to pray and fasting because it's too long. Now, I didn't even remember how long we stayed there. Because before I know, we were finished. I still want to be there. Because before I know, we're finished, I still want to be there. I look at my son, before I knew, he just jumped on top of me, on top of the bed. He say, want to talk more about the church? I say, God, is this what you can do? Waking me up to talk about church? My son of all my, of all this, among all the children. So I give praise to God.
Hallelujah.
Because it's a big breakthrough. I thank God for everything. In Jesus' name.
Amen. Hallelujah. Praise God. Let's move forward into the announcement area. I thank God for all the testimonies. I know that there might be more, but because of the time, we need to move forward. So looking at the weekday's schedule, that Monday, our house prayer will be in Sister Glory George is in Enchicor, that's at seven PM. Then Tuesday, we'll have a special meeting in here by Pastor Vikram and his wife, they will be with us on Tuesday evening at six thirty, we'll have our meeting in the church. So encourage the undead church to come and attend that meeting, it will be a greater blessing. We thought of having a special meeting tomorrow, the full day, but I thought it is a bank holiday, unfortunately, it's not, so we need to cancel that. And Thursday, we have the full day from eleven to four o'clock, we got our youth meeting here with Pastor Vikram and his wife, they will be conducting the full day youth meeting. So I encourage all the youth about twelve that you need to attend that. And if you know some of your friends or neighbors, those who are the youth, you can bring them also, they're more than welcome. We'll provide the lunch and all that is required that day, it will be met by the church. Amen. And again, Friday evening, we'll have a special meeting with Pastor Vikram from six thirty. They'll be ministering with us on Friday evening. And as, this is the last, third Saturday of the month and we have, what do we have? Horatio Shands. So this Saturday will be our Horatio Shands, the children's full day program, that will be from nine thirty to two thirty. So all the children and your friends, we normally get about eighty-two, ninety children, they come. So keep that in prayer and let's reach out more. And that's a glorious day. God is doing amazing things in our midst, amen? Hallelujah. Bless up his holy name. Thank God. Now we're going to take our offering for the blessing of the kingdom of God. Let's give unto the Lord what is belongs to God Almighty. And then after that, the Pro-Life, they will give their presentation. Then Pastor Vikram will be ministering to us. Amen. Bless up his holy name. Amen. Sacrifice of praise into the house of the Lord. We bring the sacrifice of praise into the house of the Lord. Sacrifice of praise. Amen. Let's pray for the offering. Father, we declare your glory, Lord, my God. Thank you for giving us a grace that we could, we could able to worship you in truth and spirit, God, my Father. Thank you, Lord, for blessing your people, God, my Lord. And out of that, they could able to offer unto you, Father in heaven. We release this offering into your blessed hand. We ask you to accept it, sanctify it and use it for your glorious kingdom. As your people, they release, God, my Lord, I ask you to bless them abundantly, God, my Lord, that their hand will be blessed so abundantly and their storehouse will overflow in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Now as we're going to hear it from the all Lord God, the team from Pro-Life, we ask you to, Lord, take control over and give us, the Lord God, much more detail that we can pray and support and stand with them for your glory. We give all the glory and honor to you. Jesus' name we ask this prayer. Amen. Amen. Now it's a time, let's welcome our team to come forward and release. Come on, put your hands to welcome them in Jesus' name. Amen. God bless you.
Thank you very much for allowing us to come here. And it's been an absolute blessing to be here in the very beginning. And I have been to some of your churches for prayer days, particularly for women. And I know how strong you are in the word of God. It's just absolutely wonderful to declare the scriptures and because, and I love the way the song went this morning about he can move the mountains. And we certainly have a mountain to be moved in our land. And I'm so touched and so grateful, the way you pray for our nation. It is just, we're blessed, we're totally blessed to have you here. Thank God. So maybe the first, is there a first slide if possible? Yeah. It's just love both. I'm just going to read you a part of the scripture that you're very used to. Of course, it's Psalm one hundred and thirty-nine, just giving God the glory through his word. For you created my inmost being, you knit me together in my mother's womb. I praise you because I am fearfully and wonderfully made. My frame was not hidden from you when I was made in the secret place. Your eyes saw my unformed body. All the days ordained for me were written in your book before any of them came to be. And that's so incredible to hear those words of the Lord. And a lot of people know that scripture, a lot of people might not know. I'm sure you do here. James one fourteen to fifteen, and I'm just putting it paraphrase. You know the way temptation pulls us towards wrong desires? And when desire takes root, it gives birth to sin. So once sin is given a foothold, it's always greedy for more. And in two thousand and thirteen, we had a referendum and the door to legalized abortion was opened just a little bit. We grieved desperately about that. Sin was given a foothold and true to form, it is now looking for more and wanting that door to be opened much wider. So this year, we have this mountain to face, a referendum at the end of May, I think. And that will allow, if it goes through, the door to be opened wider. And the evidence is there all over, if you look at other countries, that today have fully legalized abortion on demand. It began with opening the door just a little bit. That's why I'm here representing Pro-Life Campaign with my colleague Anita, and she'll say a few words near the end, and asking for help really, and I hear it's already happening. And of course, prayer is number one, but we have to go into action as well. And so we are asking today, maybe you could be involved in some way. And I'll explain a little bit as we go along. So maybe the next one, simply communicating the pro-life message and getting involved today. Sadly, and not too surprisingly, it seems that the media are much on the side of pro-abortion people. And this means that the pro-life message is being blocked and not heard. But what can we do about this? That in a way is no problem to the Lord. So prayer is so powerful. But we in Pro-Life have discovered a method which is already in progress, sorry, and already making a big difference. And we believe it could actually change the referendum, change the result of the referendum. And it's called canvassing and which is simply talking to people on the street. And when you become a little bit more experienced and no fear, knocking on doors. But I'll explain a little bit more of that as we go along. And the next one, thank you. Sorry, just read what's on the screen. So who we are? We were established in nineteen eighty-one, so we're well established, pioneered the nineteen eighty-three amendment. So the Eighth Amendment was pioneered and established by Pro-Life Campaign. So we have about forty thousand supporters and twenty, about two thousand active volunteers. And we have strong political, medical and legal research team. So Pro-Life Campaign, it's trying to deal with the politics as well, trying to go on television, if you like, and be able to cope with debates and all that kind of thing. And there are good people in Pro-Life Campaign to do that. And so the Eighth Amendment is the next one. Thank you. I'll just read that out to you. It says, the state, our country, the government, our state acknowledges, our constitution acknowledges the right to life of the unborn and with due regard to the equal right to life of the mother, guarantees in its laws to respect and as far as practicable, practicable by its laws to defend and vindicate that right. And so that right is now in great danger of being taken out of our constitution. That Eighth Amendment has even been recognized internationally. And up to two thousand and thirteen, when the door was opened that little bit, Ireland was known and recognized internationally as a country that provided the best care to mothers and their children and therefore one of the safest places in the world to have a baby. Because you see, our doctors, because there was no abortion allowed, our doctors have become very skilled. And we were proud of them. And in the UN, I remember somebody who's there saw a charter up with Ireland on the very top as being the safest place to have a baby. But that is no longer quite true. So as you know, there's a serious campaign underway at present to dismantle and repeal, get rid of the Eighth Amendment out of our constitution. It's hugely funded and that could be, please, a point for prayer. You maybe already know that, but it's been hugely funded from outside and particularly a man called George Soros, S-O-R-O-S. He is a very, very wealthy billionaire and does not believe in God and supports many things like this, but he hugely supports. He did in two thousand and thirteen and causes this kind of problem everywhere. And sadly, there are few key people in our government, as you know, who are pro-life. And yes, I know, I'm sure you already pray for the ones who are standing up and it's very difficult for them, but we're right behind them. But we're convinced, even though there are few in the government, convinced from experience that out there in the country, there are actually quite a large percent, percentage of people who are on the middle ground, who aren't too sure what way to vote and they're the ones we're after. And also we have an actuarial report, that means an independent report done, which identified that at least a hundred thousand people are alive in Ireland today because of the Eighth Amendment. And it shows you how valuable it is and how important it is that we keep it. So the next slide is just winning hearts and minds. How we communicate the message is vitally important. We want to talk to people on the middle ground who are sitting on the fence or who haven't made up their minds, but also there are people out there who just listen to what the media say and who just read in the papers what the media say. And there is fake news out there, it is for sure, but it is biased, it is biased. Everybody is pro-abortion, it would seem. But there are people in country with God honoring hearts, I believe, who we need to reach. And the best way to do that is with just balanced and moderate, never compromising, never watering down the message, yet having the right attitude and loving hearts and friendly hearts. So next slide, please. Thank you. And so we also need to be balanced, professional, resilient, able for the battle. We simply want to bring people into better understanding, wherever they are. And last year, we had a wonderful man from America came. This was a different kind of Christian conference, but he was about six foot five, a great big tall man. But I always have a picture of him as he kind of bent forward and he would talk about our approach to other people. And to you say, incline your ear. And there's so much, that's mentioned quite a lot in the Bible to incline your ear, just bend forward and hear where the other person is coming from and speak to them in a loving way, yet firm. So we want to talk to people and not at people. And yes, we're looking just to really win hearts and minds from the middle ground in particular. So the next one is street canvass, a little word about that. In the past couple of months particularly, it is a growing movement and it's happening all over Ireland and we're so thankful for this. I think we didn't realize how quickly it would take off and how it would grow. You see, good training is given beforehand. So really, when you think of going out in the street and maybe talking to people about pro-life, it's never just on one's own. It can be done, of course, but usually with two or three and somebody first of all who has experienced and done this before. But it really is nothing to fear. And then you might do that and it's fun and usually let people see who you are. There, you see some of the pink up there. But they know straight away that it is Pro-Life Campaign and we're just being honest, yes we are, and this is what we're talking about. And it kind of, it makes it much easier. So Anita will talk to you a little bit about that. Next one is communing the pro-life message. This one, knocking on the door, that might really scare people. But again, we have little questionnaires to help with all of that. And I'll give you an example. You can hope I'm not going on too long, okay? An example, you know, you can ask people's opinion about something. You could say, if you had to guess, how many pregnancies would you say end in abortion in England and Wales? And you have a choice, is it fifty pregnancies, is it twenty, or is it, sorry, is it one in fifty, one in twenty, one in five? People would usually say one in twenty and it is actually one in fifty. And another question could be, if you had to guess what percentage of unborn babies with Down syndrome are aborted in England and Wales? Would it be twenty percent, sixty percent or ninety percent? And the answer sadly is ninety percent. And we know that in some countries, it's already totally banned. And just this lovely scripture, which again, you're very familiar with, Salt and Light, Matthew five, fourteen to sixteen. You are the light of the world; a city on a hill cannot be hidden; neither do people light a lamp and put it under a bowl. Instead, they put it on a stand and it gives light to everyone in the house. In the same way, let your light shine before men, that they may see your good deeds and praise your Father in heaven. And so in canvassing, it's really just going out there, in a way almost you would try and talk to people about the Lord. But this is just being open and friendly and building contacts. And in doing all this, you become strong and fearless and well able for it and actually enjoying it. It's, it can be great fun. So the next slide, just street interaction, yeah, just little picture there of just street presence, people getting used to seeing us on the street. And it's important to have, be able to do this and also eventually going, knocking on the doors. And so the next slide simply says, sorry. The time it took, this girl said, the time it took to plan an abortion in England was the time I needed to change my mind. And there are many, many like that. And also many personal stories. This little leaflet, I just read you one of those, is just great. These are the kind of leaflets we hand out to people. And some would just never have read stories like this because on the media, they're hearing just negative stuff. And so Shauna Prebet faced a horrendous situation when she became pregnant after rape. She was never, she has never once regretted her decision to continue the pregnancy. And today, she says, "I think the world would be much worse place without my little girl." Shauna is not alone. Seventy-four percent of women in Ireland who become pregnant after rape do not have an abortion. These are the stories we need to hear when abortion, for the hard case, is being proposed. Rape is an unimaginable and horrendous crime. However, we do not suggest ending the life of a human being to rectify any other crime. If we are truly concerned about protecting women, we should seek stronger sentences for rapists and real justice for those who are victim of rape. And the next one. Oh, here we are. This picture, yes, of a rally. And there is another rally coming up, actually. And it's on the 10th of March, not too far away. It's, this one is organized by another pro-life organization called Life Institute, full of more good people and brave people. And so everybody takes turns really in organizing these rallies. And this is an all-Ireland rally. And I believe God gave us the idea to do this. I haven't got it for the screen, but I can send it by email if you want to have it. Is that okay? And it's simply called Boots on the Ground. And it's all one voice together for the voiceless. And what we're saying as the Christian churches, you know, the Catholic Church was really the one strong voice speaking out. But people, because of historical background, people don't trust it enough. And you know, an awful lot of things, bad things have happened. But they are full of God-honoring people. And this is where we, the Christian churches, the suggestion here is that we would add our numbers to their rally and come perhaps with a placard with a message about saving the Eighth Amendment, but also who you are, like your Ministry of Jesus church. And we're sending it all over the country, even Northern Ireland as well, who have stood and kept that door shut. And we're saying, "Come and flood the streets." And so I leave some of these outside on the table. But we just sensed that it was a God idea. And who knows, we're trusting Him that it would work. And just another scripture you are so familiar with. Proverbs 6:17, "God hates the shedding of innocent blood." And that, of course, on our whole nation, that's where we're so worried, people of prayer, I'm part of people of prayer. We're so worried the effect spiritually and physically this can have on our land. Thank you so much again for praying for us. And Proverbs 24 is a very key scripture that says, "Rescue those who are unjustly sentenced to death." Unjustly sentenced to death. "Don't stand back and let them die. Don't try to dislame responsibility by saying you didn't know about it. God, who knows all hearts, knows yours and mine, and He knows we know, and He will reward everyone according to His deeds." And so finally, we're asking you to get involved. And just before I go, there's one last picture there. That's just, yeah, just to say the end and thank you. And please, Anita, can you come up and say a little word? Oh, one last thing, I'm so sorry, but it's very important. I don't know if you can see what this picture is. It's the picture of a baby's hand. Just yesterday, a few of us just felt called by the Lord to go up and pray around the government offices, just outside. But the night before, one of our godly men had this picture. He had a dream. And it was a dream of just with total darkness, but out of the darkness came this baby's hand, reaching out. And I thought it was such a moving picture. And then he went to sleep again, and again, he had a second dream. This time, the hand was reaching out again. But it was like it was a little bit stronger. And he, in his dream, felt he was able to get hold of it and connect. And it spoke volumes to us that this darkness is ready there. But you know, another extraordinary thing. And we were up in Marion Square yesterday. And on a Saturday, all have paintings and everything around the square. And on the square, there was a picture of a baby, of a baby, with huge, big, dark arms threatening, coming around that little baby. And so we felt it was almost confirmation. Yes, please keep on, please keep fighting this battle. So Anita, sorry, please come. Thank you. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord.
My name is Anita, I'm from Pro-Life. And she's literally said everything that is to say. But I will probably just maybe target my message to maybe the younger ones. Because for me, it's like, where I'm from, it's like, they say charity begins at home. It's like, what you've learned, turn up a child in the way you should go, and when he grows up, he'll never depart from it. So if you have this idea from the onset, you know this is wrong, this is something that probably shouldn't be done, you would obviously canvass and talk more about it to your friends. You go to school, you have friends you talk to, you've heard this. How many have heard of this before? Just, okay. Now you have more information, you can talk to your friends about it. Get your friends on board, tell them this is what's happening. Basically, that's what canvassing is about. Advocating for something, you're standing for something, you're taking a stand. And basically, to those who don't know what it's about, those who are on the fence, who haven't decided, are the ones, like you say, we're targeting. So we would love for you to talk to your friends about this. Anybody committing? Will you talk to your friends? Oh, nobody's saying anything. Will you talk to your friends, tell them about Pro-Life? Tell them about the work we're doing? Good. I would also want some of you, if you're interested, you could get wristbands to show your standing for something. If you're taking a stand, if there's anybody who wants the bands. And also, we have some flyers, you can also put this on your cars as well, indicating they are taking a stand, they're standing with us. You are for us, you're pro-life. So if you're interested, please, I could give out some of these too. It's, I would probably, Edmond has a question. A question, you want one? Oh, okay, for your car, thank you very much. Oh, okay, wow, thank God, that's good. Any questions? Would anybody have any questions? From the young people, any questions, please? Are you sure? You want to have any questions, ask me, go ahead and ask, it's fine, she can answer as well. Okay, great, that's fine. So I'm glad everybody's on board with this. Thankful, I enjoyed your service. And I like the fact that the kids were very involved, playing the guitar, playing everything. That's really nice, I had service in charge today. Thank you for having us, thank you.
For those who are interested, if you put down your name, if that's okay by you?
Yeah, I wanted to say that.
Please, we have a list here, if anybody's interested in joining, put down your name, your number, and anything. Okay, okay, thank you, okay.
Amen.
Amen, thank you very much.
Come on, give a clap for the Lord, hallelujah, for people standing like this, amen. People filled with zeal, amen. Do you know what time on March 10th? Do you know what, March 10th? Yeah.
The 10th.
Yes, what time it is? Okay, we can get the detail here. Okay, so we'll be there. Ministry of Jesus, we are going to join with that rally on March 10th, amen. Shall we all stand in the presence of God? Especially the schoolchildren, get that leaflet, get that wristband, you know, that you can show that you're standing for the Lord, hallelujah. If the evil can be so much bold to spread their evil message, how much more we need to be, hallelujah, amen. So we are having the Spirit of God instead of us. We need to be more boldness, in Jesus' name. Now we're going to have the worship team to come forward, they're going to lead a song. Can I have the worship team to come forward? They're going to lead the song then, Pastor Vikram will come, and he will share the word of God, amen. Children, you can get it after the service even. Yeah. You all are going to get, yeah. Yes, thank you. Shall we all be in the attitude of reverending God? You can, they will be here with us until the service finish. So if anybody have any questions, or you know, whatever they have, the leaflet and everything can have it in the end of the service. Children, please, parents, take your children, please. They just hold your children.
It's good to be in the house of the Lord, amen?
Amen.
Amen. Okay, let's sing this song. And the song is, "Thy loving kindness is better than life," amen? Thy loving kindness. Thy loving kindness is better than life. Thy loving kindness is better than life. My lips shall praise thee, thus will thy blessing be. Thy loving kindness is better than life. Thy loving kindness, thy loving kindness is better than life. Thy loving kindness is better than life. My lips shall praise thee, thus will thy blessing be. Thy loving kindness is better than life. I lift my hands up unto thy name. I lift my hands up unto thy name. My lips shall praise thee, thus will thy blessing be. Thy loving kindness is better than life. Thy loving kindness is better than life. Thy loving kindness is better than life. My lips shall praise thee, thus will thy blessing be. Thy loving kindness is better than life. O Lord, I love thee with all my heart. O Lord, I love thee with all my heart. My lips shall praise thee, thus will thy blessing be. Thy loving kindness is better than life. O Lord, I love thee, oh Lord, I love thee with all my heart, with all my heart. O Lord, I love thee with all my heart. My lips shall praise thee, thus will thy blessing be. Thy loving kindness is better than life. O Lord, I serve thee with all my heart. O Lord, I serve thee with all my heart. O Lord, I serve thee, oh Lord, I serve thee with all my heart, with all my heart. O Lord, I serve thee with all my heart. O Lord, I serve thee with all my heart. O Lord, I serve thee with all my heart. My lips shall praise thee, thus will thy blessing be. Thy loving kindness is better than life. Thy loving kindness is better than life. Thy loving kindness is better than life. My lips shall praise thee, thus will thy blessing be. Thy loving kindness is better than life. O Lord, I love thee with all my heart. O Lord, I love thee with all my heart. My lips shall praise thee, thus will thy blessing be. Thy loving kindness is better than life. Thank you, Lord.
Hallelujah, let's pray. Let's ask the Lord to speak to us today. What the heaven is keeping for us. Let that come through the servant of God, hallelujah. Father, we thank you, we worship you, God. Thank you, Jesus, as we stand before your throne with God, my Father, that you will use your servants so gloriously. Thank you for, Lord, bringing them again into this place with God, my Father. The name that is the name of all name, that anointing of God that flows from heaven above, that will take control over him in the name of Jesus Christ. All that you're keeping for us, with God, we shall receive it today in Jesus' mighty name. We surrender Pastor Vikram in your hands, and then the congregation in the hand of God, my Father. In Jesus' name we ask this prayer, amen, amen, hallelujah. May be seated now, amen. Thank God for the anointing upon his wife, for leading us into the song. May God bless her more and more, amen. So Pastor Vikram is not new to us, he was here with us a few months back. And we're very delighted and happy that he's, he and his wife is here in our midst. So shall we put our hands to welcome him, hallelujah, to come and share the word of God, amen? Praise God. Praise you, Jesus. The joy of the Lord is our strength, amen? Though we go through so many things in life, but there is one thing that remains in us, that is the joy of the Lord. And that joy gives us strength to continue and not to give up, amen? Because we are not going to give up, amen? Because our Lord never gives up on us, amen? He's always there for us, always there to strengthen us, encourage us, build us up, amen? And he has promised, "I will never leave you nor forsake you." Doesn't matter what you go through in your life, doesn't matter what mistakes you have done in your life. You know, even if we do a mistake, Lord is able to do a miracle. In Bible, we read about Jonah. And Lord asked him to go to Nineveh, he started running to Tarshish. That was a big mistake. But what God did, he brought him back. He did a miracle. He was for three days, three nights inside fish, amen? Jesus was on the cross, he died on the cross. But third day, he was raised from the dead. The mistake of man to crucify him, but the plan of God Almighty to save many. But that man's mistake turned into a blessing, into a miracle, amen? Amen? You know, Moses did a mistake by trying to win war with his flesh, and he killed Egyptians. And then he had to run away, and he was in wilderness. But one day, the Lord Almighty appeared to him in that place. And how God delivered through his hand many millions of people. You know, you may be thinking that, "Lord, I have done mistake, I have missed it. Maybe I did something wrong in my past. Maybe I have done something bad because of that. I don't think, you know, I'll have a good future. Maybe I missed my prophecy, what I received, because, you know, after receiving the prophecy, I did a mistake, or I slept with someone, or I started lying, or something else I did." You know, many times, we think that way, and we think that, you know, we missed it. In Bible, you can read about so many people who missed a mark, you know, who missed in their life. They were called by God, but they, they, you know, gave place to sin in their life. Even about David, you can see that how he slept with wife Uriah, and then he lost his son. But then you see, Solomon came later on. And now how Lord was merciful to him, and how, because he kept on loving God, God turned his mistake for his good. That's who our God is. Our God is a good God. Can you say, "My God is a good God"? So that means we all have hope. You know, I have gone through time in my life, when I got saved near 2002. I was working in the UK, and then Lord asked me to go back to India. So I was living in a city called Amrissa. And I knew that this is where God wants me. And, but because of tremendous pressure and the problems I faced, and so many Kegot cases started, and, you know, there was life threats, so I had to run to another city. But somehow, I knew that I should remain in this city, I should not run away. And I tell you, I ran away. And for three, four years, I was thinking, "Lord, I did a mistake. I should not have given up, I should not have gone away from that place." Maybe, you know, you spoke to me that miracles will happen in this city. Now, that will never come to pass, because I missed it somewhere. But God is such a good God, even though I ran away from that place, and I was in other city, Lord opened doors for me. You know, how many of you use navigation? You know, most of you use navigation. And how many of you miss a turn? When navigation says, "Turn left," and somehow you cross it, you say, "Oh, you know, I lost it, I should have turned left." How many of you done that? You know, we all do that mistake when we miss a road, turning on the right or left. But what will the navigation say that? Navigation will never say, "Oh, I give up. I'm not going to help you anymore." I'm not going to help you anymore because you people don't listen to me." You know, that lady speaking on that, you know, it never says that, "You know, you don't listen to me, so I'm going to go quiet." You know, what will the navigation say? Recalculating, recalculating. And then the second turn will come and navigation will say, now that lady is speaking, will say, "Turn left." And we'll miss that also. So what will that lady say? "Oh, you are such a messy people. You know, you don't want to listen to me, so I'm not going to help you." No, after a few minutes, again say, in a few seconds, recalculating, recalculating. You know, always there to help us, always has a way somehow so that we can reach our destination. That same with our God. Even if you have missed in your life, God has a plan for you, amen? You know, even if you don't see any road and you'll say, "Oh, there is no road." God knows how to make a new way for you. God knows how to make a road for you because he will never give up on you. He's such a faithful God. Doesn't matter how much you have messed up in your life, God is still, he knows how to take you towards your destiny, amen? You know, from the book of Genesis till Revelation, you can read people who messed up in their life. You know, you read about Adam. He lost all the hope, but even then Lord had a plan for him and how God sacrificed animal, covered him and made so many promises with him. So so many people we see messed up. Jacob, he messed up and he tried to, you know, win a blessing, you know, lying with his father. But Lord turned that for good and he had to run away from his house, leave his father's house and he was living with his uncle Laban and he faced few challenges there, but God gave him a family there. God blessed him there, even though he did mistake, but because he kept on trusting God, walking with God, God made a way for him, amen? So I want you to reject everything that is holding you and the guilt that you're holding in your life that, "Lord, I have made mistake. I know because of that I have to go through hardships. Maybe I missed my prophecy. Maybe now you will not, you know, use me." Because last time when some preacher came, he prayed over me, he prophesied over me, he blessed me, but after that I sinned after few days. I think I lost all my anointing and call. You know, God never takes call away from your life. Calling and gift of God are irrevocable. Without repentance, God will never take call away from you, amen? That's why Bible says, "In that day many will come in my name. Did I not cast out demons on your name? Did not I prophesied?" And Lord will say, "I never knew." That means the gift was still there. That means the call was still there. God never took it, but yeah, it's our responsibility to come back to God and repent. "Lord, I am sorry. I thank you. You are such a loving God that you never give up on us, amen?" Even though we miss sometimes in our life, but you will say, recalculating, recalculating, making a new way for you because I will never give up on you. You know, if you can turn your Bibles to Ephesians and chapter six. Ephesians, chapter six, and we'll just read few verses. And verse 12, just verse 12. "For we do not wrestle against flesh and blood, but against the rulers, against the authorities, against the cosmic powers over this present darkness, against the spiritual forces of evil in the heavenly places." Spiritual forces of evil in the heavenly places. So Bible is talking about that we all are in a warfare. If you are a Christian, you are in a warfare. If you're not a Christian, you are already under the slavery of devil. You know, for them, they don't feel any warfare because they're already there, slaves. But once we give our life to the Lord, we realize that there is a war. Our flesh is trying to take us, you know, and take hold of our life and, you know, into wrong things and the spirit is saying, "Don't do that." That's when the real war starts. And Bible is talking about that we are in a warfare, not against any man, but against spiritual forces, amen? In Genesis, chapter one, verse 26, there you say that Bible says that, "God made man in his own image and own likeness. And then God gave man authority, dominion. And after that, God blessed the man and then he asked him to work." And Bible says, "All things that God created, he put into man's hand. All the earth, everything on the earth, every animal, God said, 'You take authority, dominion.'" Sami says, "Heaven belongs to God; earth he has given to man." You know, many times we ask question, "God, why this nation is like that? Why people are turning away from you? Why wrong things are happening? Why that eighth amendment we heard about? Why this is happening?" You know, why that happens? Because we don't arise. Because we think that, you know, you know, God knows, God is doing everything. He's in control over everything. No, he has given earth to man. And when God made Adam, what he did? He gave him dominion. He said, "You take care of this physical world." To take control over this physical world, God had to give Adam a body. And that's why Genesis, chapter two, verse seven says, "Then God made man," means man's body out of the dust of the ground, "and then he breathed into his nostrils spirit of life." Where did God created man? He created man inside him. It's like in a woman, a pregnant woman has baby and the baby is formed inside the woman. Not once it comes out. It happens when the baby is inside. So when God created man, he created man inside himself and then God made body out of dust and he said, "Adam, live in this body. I give you this body and now take control over this physical world, amen?" So God to take control over this physical world, he used Adam. He gave him a body. He gave that spirit man, made in his likeness, a body so that he can live in that body and he can rule, take dominion, take kingship, take authority so that everything that happens on the earth will happen according to the will of God. But Bible says, "Adam sinned against God and he was able to deceive Eve." And now Adam was more in love with his wife than God and he hurt his wife and he listened to his wife and, you know, disobeyed God and he also ate from the tree. And now many people say, "Oh, I messed up. I messed up. Oh, woman messed up." You know, I heard from someone and saying that, "Oh, woman, because of woman, it's because of woman." You know, I heard some people say, "Hey, Adam was also there standing alongside. It was his responsibility to teach his wife." And the same woman who messed up, you know, God gave a prophecy in Genesis, chapter three, "Through the seed of this woman." So devil, you use the woman? I'm going to use the woman to crush your head, amen? If you think that, you know, somehow you have been like a puppet in the hands of devil and he has used you in the past, I tell you, now as you give your life to God, God is going to use you and he's going to crush the head of the devil, amen? Amen? That is the plan of God for your life. That is how he turns everything around. I was such a messed up boy, messed up boy, you know, when I was young, did so many mistake in my life and, and people, neighbors nearby, you know, they will ask their children, "Don't sit with him. Don't fellowship with him." I was that type of, you know, guy. But when once the God started came in me, he came in me, he started using in me for his glory so that now, you know, I can bring people into the kingdom of God. That same with every one of you. He wants to use you. He want to work through your life. Allow Holy Spirit to use you. Don't sit quietly. It's our responsibility. The first thing that happened to me when I got saved and I went to one church. You know, I got saved on Monday. That was a Monday. And before that Monday, two weeks before that, I went to one church. It was Scottish church in Scotland. And there I was somehow arguing with people after the meeting. No, you know, I was talking about my religion. They were talking about life-giving Christ, you know. So there was lot of argument. And now I got saved on Monday after two weeks and then I went back to that church on Sunday to share what happened in my life. And by that time I left my job. It, you know, because Lord said, "Leave your job." So Friday I left my job. So I left my job on Friday and then Sunday I went back to that church. So they didn't wanted me to share testimony because they think, "Two weeks back, this guy was saying something else and now he's saying, coming and saying, you know, I want to share something." So I wanted to share that I was a sinner, Jesus saved me. But as they gave me the mic later on and I started saying, "Church, we have to do something. People are dying without Christ. World is going into death. And if we don't rise up, then who will? I said, I can feel the heartbeat of God. God is grieved because of what is happening in this world, amen?" So God made man. He gave him a body so that he can rule this physical world and apply the heart of God, the word of God in this world. So it's like extension of heaven. You know, that's how it was. So beautiful in the beginning, no death, you know, no animals fighting with each other, no one killing each other, no killing babies, no killing animal, yeah, no killing of, you know, brother killing brother and Cain killed Abel. You know, there was no killing. The killing came because man allowed sin in their life and then devil came who was waiting for opportunity to somehow enter the body of man. Where to enter? The body of man. Because these spiritual forces cannot do anything unless until they get a body. God cannot do anything. It's not that he cannot, but he will not do because that will break his principle. So that will be illegal for God. So to rule over this physical world, God needs a body. That's why he took on body when Christ Jesus came so that now he can die for man so that he can heal the sick. So every time you read in the Bible, even if it has to do with some prophetic word, even if it has to do with healings, even if it has to do with rescuing a nation or saving a nation, God always used man and even used donkey because he needs something physical. Same with the devil. He wants body. He wants someone who is arrogant. He wants someone who is saying, "There is no God." He wants someone who is living in sin. And he always look for opportunity, "Which body can I enter?" You know, one day Jesus went to a man who had legion inside him and those demon spirit spoke through him, you know, "Allow us to go into pigs because we don't want our work to stop. We want a body." So if you want us to cast us out from this man, send us into the pig's body. At least we'll start hurting people every day. Now do something that will trouble people. Because to trouble man, to trouble this world, he needs a body, a physical body. Because without that body, he cannot do anything. In Bible, there are few verses I just want to take you through. It's in the Corinthians, 1 Corinthians, chapter six, verse 13. 1 Corinthians, chapter six, verse 13, and then we'll read from 18 to 20. "Food is meant for the stomach and stomach for food, and God will destroy both one and the other. The body is not meant for sexual immorality, but for the Lord, and the Lord for the body." So body is not meant for sexual immorality, but for the Lord. So that means this body is not to commit sin, not to commit sexual sins, immorality. This body is for the Lord, amen? This body is for the Lord. Your body belongs to God. Jesus has paid a price for you. Then verse 18, it says, "Flee from sexual immorality." Flee, why? Because if we allow sin in our life, that is like giving a foothold to devil in one area of our life. And then he will start using our life to spoil other people because spirit of lust will enter and then we want to commit adultery or do something wrong and then we'll make a reason for other persons falling. You read in Bible, in the book of Genesis, the life of Joseph, that how his master's wife wanted to sleep with him, but he didn't give any foothold. And Bible says, "He flee from that place." That's what devil was looking for opportunity so that he can destroy the future of Joseph completely, completely. Because somehow, you know, devil knows, devil knows. You know, sometime it takes us time to know that God has a plan for me, but devil knows. When Jesus was born, how many babies were murdered? How many babies were killed? When Moses was born, how many pregnant women? And right away when baby was born, they were killed. Even so many warfares you read in the Bible, you know, they will kill the pregnant woman and the baby inside them because devil is a murderer. He wants to kill people. He doesn't want new generation to arise and he's afraid of this end time generation. Because the babies who are coming, you know, you can see how many children they were, they, you know, they are leading us in worship and playing instruments. So beautiful to see that. He's afraid of this generation, amen? Tell your neighbor, devil is afraid of you. So Bible is saying, "Flee from sexual immorality." Even others seen a person commit in, is outside the body, but the sexually immoral person sins against his own body. Do you not know that your body is a temple of Holy Spirit? Do you not know that your body is a temple of God? And God's temple is holy. Everyone say, "God's temple is holy." Everyone say, "My body is the temple of Holy Spirit." And this temple is holy, amen? Do you not know that your body is a temple of Holy Spirit within you, whom you have from God? You are not your own. You are not your own. You know, there was a very famous song many years back before I got saved. I liked that song, you know, before I got saved. "It's my life, you know? You know, it's my life. I know whatever I want to do, I'll do." And me and my friend driving in a car, "It's my life." And sometimes drinking alcohol, "It's my life." But that time I gave my life to the devil. Only when I got saved and some demons came out from me, then I understood it was not my life I gave to him, amen? But now my life belongs to Jesus. Your life belongs to Jesus. It's not your life, it's the life of Jesus. Because Paul said, "I have been crucified with Christ. It's no longer I who live, but it's Christ who lives in me. And the life that now I live in the flesh, I live by faith in the Son of God." So that means it's not your life, it's the life of Christ. It's powerful. It's the life of Christ. Is Jesus in me? When you're walking, maybe people are seeing your outer appearance, but these spirits, they recognize Jesus. You know, when you walk, the spirit will say, these spirits say, "Oh, see, Jesus is walking." Yeah? They see Jesus. That's why when the apostles of Jesus, disciple of Jesus, casting out demons and demons started coming out of them. Why? They obeyed them. Why? Because it was not them who were commanding them to come out. It was Jesus living inside them. You know, around in year 2002, Benihin came to India. It was a big crusade in Mumbai. Around 45, 4.5 million people attended that crusade for three days. And I was there and I, and I think it was on the second or third day, some police officers came on the stage. He called them on the stage and Holy Spirit touched them. They were falling under the presence of God. Policeman on duty. And then one big officer came and he came and saluted Benihin on the stage like this. And there was one elderly pastor with me. He said, "Do you know whom he is saluting?" I said, "Whom?" He said, "He's saluting Jesus inside Benihin. Jesus is getting honor. Jesus is getting glory, amen?" So these spirits, they recognize Christ in you. They know you have Jesus living in you. They are afraid of you. Devil is afraid of you. And but some people because of lack of knowledge, they don't know the word of God. They don't know the truth. They don't know who they are in Christ. You know, we are kind of trying to, we are afraid. We're so afraid. We are so afraid of devil. We are afraid that we'll fall. We are afraid that we'll sin because we don't understand that greater is he who is in me than he who is in the world. in me than he who is in the world. The righteousness in you is more powerful than the sin outside. Amen? The righteousness in you is more powerful than the sin outside. So you do not have to be afraid. You can just laugh at sins, eh, not me. Because I'm the righteous child of God. I am the righteousness of God. I am the righteousness, that means God reveals his righteousness through me. I am the righteousness of God, what that, does that mean? God reveals his righteousness through me. God reveals himself through me. There is a beautiful verse in the Bible where it's written, as he is, so are we in this world. As he is. Oh Lord, you know, I'm such a ugly person, you know, I've done so many mistakes in the past, I know you have all the countings. He said, no, I blotted out your sins, I, I remember them no more. It's not only you who is trying to think, oh, five years back, I messed up and because of that, I don't think I'll have a future. No, you have a future. Because God will say, recalculating. Recalculating. He's such a faithful God, he will take you to your final destiny. He will help, help you to fulfill your vision. You know, one night, Joseph saw a dream. And in that dream, the Lord spoke to him and that one day, you know, you will rise high. And, and not the whole story, he knew something, God wants me to, to lift me high. But after that, how much prob, how many problems he went through? His brothers became his enemies, they wanted to kill him, sold as a slave, in prison because of false allegation. But see how God in his faithfulness said, recalculating, recalculating, recalculating. Amen? Because before anything happens, before you make any mistake, God has already made a new route. He knows how to take you there. Before Adam sinned, he knew that he's going to sin. That's why Christ was crucified before the foundations of the world. It was already done, before he created the creation, he saw Christ already crucified. Amen? So he knows your beginning and he knows your end, because he is the beginning and the end. Amen? Maybe you don't know what's going to happen next year, you don't know what's happening, going to happen tomorrow, you don't know the right things you are going to do and the wrong mistakes are maybe wrong decisions you will take, but he knows all about that. And he'll teach you and he wants you to be careful, but even if you mess up, if you come back to him, he'll say, recalculating, turn left, turn right, start again, don't give up, you have a future, you have a life, you have hope, because I am still alive. Amen? Because we serve a living God. Our God is not dead that once he said something and now he's died, so he cannot say anything new. No, he still speaks, still alive. Jesus was raised from the dead, death couldn't hold him. Amen? So he is victorious. So Bible says, as he is, so are we in this world. As he is, so are we. Exactly the same, no difference, no difference. In your spirit, you are completely now made in the image of God. No sin, no evil, hundred percent pure, fullness of God dwells in you. You know, some people say, Lord, I'm, I have a half Holy Spirit, give me full, it's not like half peace came inside and half, it's not like that. As a person, he fully comes in here. He lives in you, he vibes in you. And he is there for you, he strengthens you and the more you realize that he is in you and working with you and for you, the more you will live in victory. Amen? Because that's, that will change everything. That will change the way you look at things, that will change the way you look at challenges in your life, the problems you face, the storms that hit your life and that will change every, everything. Because then you will start flying eagles. You know, when eagle sees storms, they are not afraid, they'll say, it's time to go high. Every time problem hits my life, I tell devil one thing, I'm going to go, I am going to fly high. Amen? I'm going to fly high. Can you shout, say, I'm going to fly high? Because my God is with me. So as I was saying, our body is the temple of Holy Spirit. In spirit, we are completely, hundred percent like Jesus. Spirit of sonship we have received. We are the sons of God, children of God. When we pray in Jesus' name, it's like not us asking the Father, it's Jesus asking. In Jesus' name I come, it's Jesus asking from inside us. That's why Bible says, walk according to the spirit. Live life according to spirit, according to Christ who lives in you, the one who was loving, the one faithful, the one who was holy, the one who was forgiving. Live like him, because that's who you are now. God has given us a new image, the image that was lost is restored now in Christ Jesus. Bible says, Christ live in us. And Bible also says, we live in Christ. What does that mean? Christ in us and we in Christ, what does that mean? Lord, you live in me, I live in you, what does this mean? On earth, on earth, Jesus lives in us. Because he wants to use this body for his glory, to deliver people, to set people free. But in heaven, we are in him. That's why Bible says, we are seated with Christ Jesus in heavenly places. Where are, where are we seated with? With Christ Jesus, where? In him, in him. So, you know, in the book of Daniel, you read about, Daniel fasted for 21 days. And then there was a warfare in the Hamelis and these principalities and powers, they said, no, no, we are not going to allow Daniel get the answer. Well, stop Gabriel. And then Michael came, Michael came and he helped Gabriel. And Satan was defeated. So many Christians, even nowadays, they think same way, oh, there is a warfare, oh, 21 days, no answer, let's 40 days, 40 days, no answer, 80 days, 80 days, no, 100 days. Because there is a warfare, where are you, Michael, are you sleeping? In the Old Testament, people fell from the grace of God. Because Bible says, he made man little lower than? That's what King James Version says. Because the translators were a little bit shocked. But the real translation is, he made us little lower than himself. Himself, N A S P, New Living Translation, many other versions say that. King James Version says, ESV says, little lower than angels. But the real translation is, little lower than himself. We are far above all the angels. That's who we were during the creation. Adam was far above all the angels. But he lost his position when he gave, allowed sin, devil in his life. And devil took away that position, snatched it from him, and he became the ruler of this world, so that whatever he desires to do will happen. If he wants to kill babies, he'll say, okay, I'll make sure babies are killed. If he want to allow sin and prostitution and adultery and all that, he said, oh, I'll make sure that happens. Because I have snatched it away from man, but thanks be to Christ Jesus, he restored that position back. Amen? In the Old Testament, we were even below the angels. Before giving a life to Christ, we fell. We are down, we on the dust now. We lost authority and dominion that God gave us. That's why there was no power in our prayers, there was no power, I wish if world will change, I wish, we were just wishing. Because there was no authority, no dominion, no power, we gave it to the devil. That's why so many religions started and so many caste system started and so many, you know, in the beginning, when God made man, there was no country. Yeah, no country, no borders, no military, and even the language was same. Till Genesis, chapter 11, verse 6. One language, one country, no need for army. Because army is to fight with other nation. Yeah, police is to protect people inside, keep the discipline. There was no army, there was no need for missiles, you don't need missiles to control your citizen. You don't need some heavy ammunition to control your citizens. This all was to fight with other nation, because when man divided. And how Satan started ruling and divided man from each other, bringing religion, bringing borders, bringing selfishness, bringing evil, whatever he wanted to do. But thanks be to Christ Jesus, that through Christ Jesus, now we have united back. Amen? United back to that life-giving tree, the Christ Jesus, so that body of Christ can once again come back and be united. You are from different nation, I am from different nation. But now we are same, we are equal, we are the children of God, we have the same Father, maybe the passports are dividing us, but heaven recognizes us as one. Amen? That's our true identity, we have in Christ Jesus. So devil uses body to do his things. So that's why he keeps on sometimes knocking about, hey, you want to sin? You want to drink? You want to sleep? Why? All he wants to do is somehow to enter. Enter. Corrupt our soul, not the spirit, our soul, corrupt it, bring corruption. So that we will give up to our body and start fulfilling the desires of the flesh. In Matthew, chapter 12. Matthew, chapter 12, and I'll, will read from verse 43 to 45. 43, 12, verse 43 to 45. When the unclean spirit has gone out of a person, it passes through waterless places seeking rest. When unclean spirit has gone out of a person, when a spirit is casted out from a person, that spirit is restless. Bible says, the spirit of God rested upon believers, when the Holy Spirit came, rested upon them. This is, God says, this is where I belong. Because when God made body, he said, not only Adam made in my image, live in it, I will live along with him. So body is not just for our soul or for us, it's for God as well. So, so when the unclean spirit has gone out of a person, it passes through waterless places, deserted places or seeking rest, rest. The demons are restless, once they, you across them out from someone. Once you give your life to Jesus and in some area of your life, maybe, you know, devil had some excess, now it's delivered, it's gone, now it's restless. Because it needs body to do its work. Less places seeking rest, but finds none. Then it says, I will return to my house. What it says, I will return to my house. Bible says, our body is the temple of Holy Spirit, that's the truth. But the lie is devil says, I will return to my house. My house, some people say, I think there are some demons living in my house. Not that house, they want this house. Because if they are just living in a room without a body, they cannot do anything. They cannot do anything. They cannot bring wrong laws, corruptible laws in the hand. So they need body to do their work and they are restless if they are just in the room, they, we want to enter a body, that's where they rest, that's their resting place. Then it says, I have returned to my house from which I came. That means they remember where they came out from. That's why people who were struggling with adultery or, you know, some lust, and now they came to Jesus and after some time they are not careful, they struggle with same things. Why? Because that same demon comes back. Same demon, not going anywhere far, don't, not going to, you know, heavenly places. So that's another tropic, because these demons are earthbound. They don't go back to heavenly places, that's other spirits, the fallen angels. But here it says, you know, they are just on this earth, very restless. And they say, let us go back. Then it says, I will return to my house from which I came. And when it comes, it finds the house empty. What does that mean? That means no word of God. Some people who get delivered and, and then they don't come to church, they don't read their Bible, they don't spend time with God, they don't fill themselves with the word of God, they are empty. So it's important for us, when we receive healing, we receive deliverance, and even if we don't have any demon anymore, but keep filling yourself with the word of God, because that gives you strength. Amen? So we need the word of God. We, our spirit needs that food, that is the word of God, the life-giving word. Then it says, I will return to my house from which I came, and when it comes, it finds the house empty, swept and put in order. It's like saying, welcome demon spirit, you know, it's like, it's like saying that, yeah? Look, see, I'm back in that same old sin, same old lifestyle, same old pornography, same old mobile phone, same old photos, same old videos, same old drinking, same old friend, look, see? The house is set in order for you. In the Old Testament, you see how Moses, God commanded Moses to make a tabernacle. And everything was very orderly. You know, this much long, this much tall, this color, that color, gold, silver, bronze. And same way, some people, you know, they order their life for demons' entries. Because when we are living in sin, no word, no word inside. And cleaned, get ready, put in order, like means going back to the same old sin, same old lifestyle. It finds the house empty, swept and put in order, then it goes and bring, goes and brings with itself, seven other spirits, more evil than itself. More evil, seven more. Maybe the first one was, if you just see, physical, just to give you understanding, maybe the first one was like a small baby or some eight years old, small, slim. And I said, no, 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 I'll bring seven more, I'll bring my, I'll go to gym and I'll bring some other brothers of mine, some big ones who are bigger than me and will make sure that now no one will be able to cast us away, cast us out from that body. So we'll make that person's life worse than before. That's the danger. That's the danger. And I've seen some people like that. They walked with God, received Holy Spirit, but they were arrogant, not careful, they sinned, okay, God gave them opportunity to repent, but they kept on sinning and what they did, they allowed the enemy. Because one day demon came back just to have a look, oh, it's back in order. Okay, I'm going to enter, oh, no, 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 now I have to be wise. Hey, seven brothers, come, we all will go in this person. And that's what happened with people. And then devil make sure that people don't come back to church, they don't fellowship. You know, he doesn't mind us watching videos on YouTube and Facebook. You know, because in that way, we'll just getting pickle. But when we come and fellowship, fellowship, coming together as a body to worship the Lord, that's why Bible says, where two or three are gathered together in my name, there am I in the midst of them. It's not saying where YouTube and you are present, I am there. Of course, God is everywhere. But there is something special when body of Christ come together as a church. Amen? So if you ask someone sitting at home, oh, I don't, I want to sit at home, morning till night, I'll just watch, listen to some message, that's all, you will not become fruitful. Because only when you become a part of a church, that's when you get opportunity to serve the Lord. That's where you receive something, you know, because many people have desire to serve the Lord, but they don't know how. When you come to the church, you know what? Maybe someone will say, oh, I can help in worship, maybe I can, you know, Maybe someone say, oh, I can help in worship, maybe I can, you know, help in something else, I can help in cleaning, I can go out and preach gospel to others, I can bring people to church, I can use my car and bringing those people to church who don't have a car. Amen? That's where you are able to fulfill the purpose of God. You will never be able to fulfill the purpose of God if you are not part of a fellowship. Because I have met some people, they say, no, I don't like to go to church. Why? Because, yeah, they are not perfect people. Our God is perfect, spirit in Christ is perfect, we all are growing, so are you. We all are growing in our soul, in our mind. It has to be renewed, changed, it needs all, it needs all the information. Amen? It's changing, going from glory to glory. Yeah, we do mistakes, but again we arise because our God doesn't give up on us. But if you are just sitting at home, how can we grow? How will we know our faults? Because, you know, one of our leader, one day he was sharing, he said, when I was unmarried, I did some marriage counseling. He said, he said, these married people, they don't understand, it's so easy, look, read the word of God. Wives honor your husband. Husband love your wife, it's so easy. I don't know, I can't, they understand. But only when he, after when he got married, then he was fasting and praying, God, please help me to love my wife. Only when you become a part of a fellowship and you start living together, that's where you start building up. That's where you can see who you are and the areas that you need to develop. Because Bible says, iron sharpens iron. Amen? Sitting at home in one corner of your house will do nothing. But you have to go and fellowship. You have to meet people who are perfect in their spirit but developing in their soul. Be with them, love them, learn to forgive. Learn, it's easy to say, oh, Lord, I forgive everyone, yeah, okay, come in fellowship, there will be people, they will hello to you definitely. But thank God for those people. Because they teach you to love. They teach you to forgive. Because if there is no one to test us, how will we know who we are, how strong we are? And God does test us. He does test us. Why? It's not because He doesn't know who we are, just to show us who we are. Because we are thinking, sitting at home, oh, Lord, I am the best Christian. There is no one like me. These church people fighting all the time, me and you in a room alone. Yeah, that's the song people sing. They don't want to go to fellowship. Because devil doesn't want them to. Because devil knows, once they become a part of a fellowship, they will start growing. We don't teach our children at home. We don't say, okay, here is the book, you read. We send them school, to school. They learn practical things, they learn how to have friends, they learn how to cooperate, they learns how to do teamwork. You know, they learn so many things, you can't learn everything, so then there is no need for schools. There is no need for teachers. Some people say, no, Holy Spirit teaches me. Yes, He is there to teach and confirm what the man of God is saying is right, receive it. That's the work of Holy Spirit. To give us an understanding of the word of God, because without Holy Spirit, I may be preaching, but you will not be able to see the heart of God inside it. Because only the revelation will transform your life. Many people have information, but they don't have any revelation. Because information will say that you do this and will say, ah, it needs to be done, but we will see when I get time. But revelation, when you get a revelation, you say, Lord, I'm even willing to give up my life to fulfill you what you asked me to do. Many people have information that if people die, they are going to hell. They will do nothing about it. They just have the information, they are, have so much of knowledge, without any revelation, they will not move even a single hand, even a single step they will not take in their life. They have, you know, oh, yeah, everyone should be saved, yeah, people are going to hell. But once you get the revelation, you will be unstoppable. You will say, even if Herod is waiting to kill me, even if a Roman empire is waiting to kill me, even if there are people who want to hang me, even if there are people who want to crucify me, I will still go because of revelation. The people with information, they are convenient people, they'll say, I'll see, I will see when I get time, I have other things to fulfill. I have my own Ishmaels to take care of, I have my own Isaac to take care of. And God is saying, go and sacrifice your Isaac. And do what I say. And when you have a revelation, you will not stop. I won't tell you, only once, before I came into, I was serving the Lord in ministry before I started leading ministry or churches. Only once we missed Sunday service. And we cried that day, Lord, please forgive us. Because we felt that something should have gone there, you know, it was, it became a part of our life, only once. And that also we were upset with the pastor. And then I said, Lord, sorry, he's our pastor. Please forgive us, you kept us there. You know, will you leave your father's house if you get upset with him? Will you leave your mother if you get upset with her? Oh, my, I wanted my mom to do this, she didn't cook, you know, this nice, some cheese curry or whatever for me, I'm not going to stay in this house. You know, you just stay, you just hang on. Even the house is not perfect, you just hang on, because you know, this is your family, this is where God kept you. This is where God has placed you. To serve and be faithful and fellowship and rejoice and learn from each other and get sharpened. Amen? So here we just read that, you know, the demon spirit will say, okay, we'll go back into this body. I'll go back and take seven more wicked spirits than me. And they enter and dwell there, and the last date of that person is worse than the first. So also will be with this evil generation. So Bible, God is warning us. He's saying, don't allow sin in your life. Don't give enemy any foothold. You know, He tried to enter the body of Jesus. In Matthew chapter 4, He came tempting him, that somehow he will listen to Him and Jesus will become his slave that like Adam became devil's slave. That's what He tried, He gave him no room, no room. And that's why Jesus said, the God of this world is coming. The ruler of this world is coming, but He has nothing in me. Nothing of devil. I have nothing in my life that belongs to devil. He cannot claim, oh, you have hatred in you. Oh, you have bitterness in you, those days, you know, your people, village people, they were going to stone you. No, no, He forgave them completely. They were going to throw him down from the cliff. He just forgave them, nothing. Because if you keep things of devil in your life, they will corrupt you and it will spread like poison in your life. So Jesus was very careful. Someone said something to him, forgiven. On the cross, someone said something to him, he was quiet. Father, forgive them, they don't know what they are doing. Nothing of devil. And I ask, want to ask you in the end, check your lives. Do you have anything in your life that is from the devil? And you may be thinking, oh, it's just a small thing, it's just a small sin, it's just a small, you know, yeah, just some bitterness, eh, this and that and unforgiveness. No. Don't give devil any foothold. Your body is the temple of Holy Spirit. Allow Holy Spirit to lead your life and take you to places, take you to people you have never thought about. He will lead you in His ways. You know what is real success? Some people think real success is buying three houses, paying all the debt, whatever needs to be paid. No. All the loans covered, all right, I am successful. Some people think, if I buy a BMW, I'm a successful person. If I am wearing some 10,000 pound suit and driving a Rolls Royce. Look, see, I am a successful man. With two big companies, that's not success. Success is finishing what God gave you. Even though you become a millionaire or billionaire, but you have not done what God gave you. You are unsuccessful. Paul said, I have finished my race. He was not billionaire when he died. He had no Mercedes, no BMW, no Rolls Royce, no big houses. All he had was beatings and lashes and the marks on his body. He said, this is what I have, look at my back, look at my body. I have marks of Jesus on my body, this is all I have, pain, persecution, hardships. I was beaten in the sea, I many times felt going to die, stoned. Jesus was beaten once, I was beaten five times. He said, this is all I have. But I finished it. You know, some people think, you know, happy ending like a movie, you know. Most of the Indian movies, if, I don't know about, you know, most of the Indian movies have happy endings. They'll come out, yeah, happy, successful. Now at last he is millionaire, yeah, happy ending. At last he got his girlfriend and now they are married, happy ending. At last the villain has died, happy ending. Maybe will die. But God will say, you finished it. You finished it. You did what I gave you. Stephen died, Paul died, beheaded. Peter died. They finished it, happy ending. Not in the eyes of man, people may be crying, oh, Lord, they killed them. But in heaven they was rejoicing. Just let me tell you one last story. Few years back, one man of God from India, very famous man of God, he passed away. And one other pastor in other city, he was praying. And, and many times while praying, you know, Lord took him to heaven, showed him in His spirit. Like Paul had that experience. John in Revelation had the experience when the spirit of God said, come up higher. So that night while praying, in his spirit, he was just lifted high. And he went to heaven and he saw, the atmosphere was really different that day. He said, I feel more rejoicing, there is so much of joy. Why is that? And he asked one angel standing there, he said, why, it's so different today, it's, it's so rejoicing, it's like some, some big party going on. He said, don't you know, the man of God has arrived heaven successfully. Not just reaching out, oh, thank God, as last I reached, ah, thank you for rescuing me from hell. No, some people will just like that, give it, just make it. Yeah, God is loving God, he say, welcome my son. But inside that person will know, Lord, I didn't fulfill what you gave me. I didn't fulfill. That will be the, I think, maybe, I don't know how in heaven it will be like, I don't want to use word painful, but I don't know. But that day may be some realization that I could have done much more, much more. I have finished what God gave me. If I would not have allowed that sin in my life, if that day I would ever pented, if that day I would have come out of that wrong relationship that was leading me into fornication, I could have. So we don't want that day. We want to be successful. We want to finish what God gave us. Can you all arise on your feet, I want worship team to come forward. Hallelujah, 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 just worship the Lord, just start thanking Him. Because God is here in this place. God is here, I know God has spoken to you. I know God is doing something in your life. I know this is a day of deliverance, this is a day of deliverance. I know the demon has to leave, I know sin has to leave, I know evil has to leave, I know darkness have to leave, in Jesus mighty name, in Jesus mighty name, in Jesus mighty name. Just worship the Lord, just thank Him, thank Him, thank Him, praise Him, praise Him, praise Him, praise Him. High praises to the Lord. Thank Jesus, thank you Jesus, thank you Jesus, we worship, we honor you, we honor you, we honor you, Father. We praise you, Jesus, we praise you, you are merciful, you are mighty, you are mighty Lord, hallelujah. Thank you for doing a new thing in my life, Lord. Thank you that I am the temple of Holy Spirit and the Spirit of God lives in me. The Spirit of God lives in me, hallelujah. I am a new creation, I am a new, my past is gone, my God is faithful. I have a wonderful glorious future, Lord, here is my life, just surrender your lives in the hand of Jesus. Lord, use me, use me, Jesus, use me, Jesus. Hallelujah, raba sakara, sora, oh, we worship. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, 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 just sing some song, just worship Him, just worship Him, just worship Him, just worship Him, just worship Him. Thank you, Jesus, thank you, Jesus, God is doing something in this place. Holy Spirit is here, God is touching your lives. You are going to bear much fruit, you are going to bear much fruit, you are going to bear much fruit. Oh, Lord is imparting His heart in your life, His heart, His heart. Lord, give them understanding so that they will hear your heartbeat, they will hear your heartbeat. Oh, Jesus, we worship. They will hear your heartbeat, Lord. Pour out your spirit, pour out your spirit. Jesus, we worship you. We worship you. We worship you. We worship you. Thank you for open heavens, thank you for open heavens. And the heavens open up. And Lord poured out His spirit. We worship. Pour out your spirit, pour out your spirit, Jesus. Pour my life, pour my life.